Okay, it is 12 noon. We'll call the meeting to order. It's a regular Assembly meeting on October 7th, 2019. Will a clerk please call the roll?
I will. Mark?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Brandy?
Excused.
Jay?
Excused.
Kurt?
Here.
Taylor?
Excused.
Bob?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. It's now time for the voluntary pledge of allegiance. Okay. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, and that's questioned and pending absentee ballots. And we will go over those. I believe there are seven. And so the clerk will read the results off and tally them up.
Thank you. Okay. We have one vote for Jeff Mutchi, one for Aaron Hankins, one for Jay Stanton Greger, one for Cynthia Lagadakis, one for Joe Stratman, one for Casey Knight, one for Scott Roberge, one for Barb Fish, one for Alec McMurray, one for Gina Esposito, and a yes on the proposition for the first ballot. Second ballot, we have one vote for Mark Jensen, one for Mark Martenson, one for Jay Stanton Greger, one for Sarah Powick Holmgren, one for George S. Doyle, one for Jackie Tyson, one for Devron Bennett, and a no on the project, on the proposition. Ballot number three, we have one vote for Jeff Mutchi, one for Jay Stanton Greger, one for Chelsea Tremblay, one for Sarah Powick Holmgren, one for Mara E. Lutamsky, one for Lisa Nilson, one for Stacy Torson, and one for Jackie Tyson, one for Casey Knight, one for Scott Roberge, one for Barb Fish, one for Alec McMurray, one for Gina Esposito, one for Devron Bennett, one for Lori Elizabeth Miller, and a yes on the proposition. Ballot number four, we have one vote for Jeff Mutchi, one for Aaron Hankins, Aaron R. Hankins, one for Chelsea Tremblay, one for Sarah Powick Holmgren, one for Mara Lutamsky, one for Stacy Torson, one for Jackie Tyson, one for Casey Knight, one for Alec McMurray, one for Gina Esposito, one for Devron Bennett, one for Lori Elizabeth Miller, and a yes on the proposition. Ballot five, we have one vote for Jeff Mutchi. All the way down to Public Safety Advisory Board, one vote for Devron Bennett. And that's all on that ballot. Ballot six, we have one for Jeff Mutchi, one for Jay Stanton Greger, one for Chelsea Tremblay, one for Sarah Powick Holmgren, one for Mara E. Lutamsky, one for George S. Doyle, one for Cynthia Lagadakis, one for Joe Stratman, one for Casey Knight, one for Scott Roberge, one for Barb Fish, one for Alec McMurray, one for Gina Esposito, one for Devron Bennett, and one for Lori Elizabeth Miller, and a yes on the proposition. And ballot number seven, one for Jeff Mutchi, one for Jay Stanton Greger, one for Chelsea Tremblay, one for Sarah Powick Holmgren, one for Mara E. Lutamsky, one for George S. Doyle, one for Cynthia Lagadakis, one for Joe Stratman, one for Casey Knight, one for Scott Roberge, one for Barb Fish, one for Alec McMurray, one for Gina Esposito, one for Devron Bennett, and one for Lori Elizabeth Miller, and a yes on the proposition. All right, so everybody...
Are you going to tally those up and give us the numbers?
Yes. Everybody let me know if I'm tallying incorrectly, please. So on Mark Jensen, it looks like a total of 591. Jeff Mutchi looks like a total of 530. Aaron Hankins, 354. Mark Martenson, 476. Jay Stanton Greger, 649. Chelsea Tremblay, 539. Sarah Powick Holmgren, 929. Mara E. Lutamsky would be 815. George S. Doyle, 651. Cynthia Lagadakis, 598. Lisa Nilson, 263. Joe Stratman, 544. Stacy Torson, 456. Jackie Tyson, 266. Casey Knight would be 850. Scott Roberge, 794. Barb Fish, 742. Alec McMurray, 880. Gina Esposito, 873. And Devron Bennett, 910. Lori Elizabeth Miller, 729. The yes on the proposition votes are 726, and the nos are 334.
Okay, thank you. So with those numbers being added to the number of votes, it changes none of the positions on the people elected to the Assembly and/or to the Proposition 1. So I would entertain a motion to certify the election as presented to us. Motion been made by Member Mutchi, I believe, seconded by Member Lynn. Any discussion? No discussion on it, I guess. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's certify the election, and I would like to... Let me find my note here. Thank you, Assemblymember Kurt Wallharter. Kurt Wallharter was appointed to a vacant Assembly seat in February of 2013, just after Borough formation, and has been an elected member of the Petersburg Borough Assembly ever since, six and a half years. Thank you, Member Wallharter, for your time and commitment to serving our community. We wish you the best in your retirement, and that's from the Assembly.
Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Enjoy yourself.
Yeah, thank you. It was my pleasure to serve. You may not have seen the last of me yet.
Good. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda, and that's where we do the oath of office for Chelsea Tremblay, who's sworn into the Assembly.
(inaudible).
Hi, Chelsea. Please raise your right hand. Oh, sorry, need glasses. Chelsea, do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alaska and the ordinances of the Petersburg Borough, and that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of Assemblymember for the Petersburg Borough, Alaska, to the best of your ability?
I affirm.
Thank you very much. I'll have you sign later.
Yeah.
Okay. You bet.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's mine.
Just, I guess, I know that Member Lynn has an iPad too, but there's a little glitch going on with the iPads. Their passcode for access to Granadas keeps popping up, so if it actually turns us out or times us out, we'll have to go with the paper copies, so... That brings us to the next item on today's agenda. October 2019 Domestic Violence Awareness Month Mayor's Proclamation. And we have a proclamation that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago, and then the clerk and the wave went over and reworded some of it. And I would like to have the clerk read it, and then we will make a mayoral proclamation that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So thank you, Debbie.
Sure. Mayor's proclamation, number one thing, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2019. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is nationally recognized each October through educational events, community gatherings, and support groups. The Domestic Violence Awareness Project recently developed a unified thing, theme, number one thing. The purpose of this campaign is to remind everyone that ending domestic violence starts with just one small action, whether that is seeking help or sharing resources. The impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in Petersburg, throughout Alaska, throughout the United States, and throughout the world. Studies show nearly 30% of Alaskans are unable to access victim services, or encourage others to do so because of a lack of services in their area. Safe housing continues to be rated as Domestic Violence Survivors' Most Urgent Need. Petersburg is blessed to have our local Working Against Violence for Everyone, WAVE, organization to advocate for domestic violence victims. The Alaska Council on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assaults 2015 Alaska Victimization Survey reports that 40% of women in Alaska experience intimate partner violence during their lifetime. Applying that statistic to Petersburg means that more than 400 women in our community have experienced intimate partner violence. Note, due to the absence of domestic violence reports and surveys regarding other genders, statistical data for other genders in Alaska is unavailable. Domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented by the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each whose number one thing adds a valuable component to transforming our communities. Petersburg joins with other communities across Alaska and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence. We support local programs, state coalitions, and national organizations and agencies who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence. We wish to send a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Petersburg. In support of the number one thing theme, I, Mark Jensen, Petersburg's Borough Mayor, hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all Petersburg citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs sponsored year-round by our local WAVE office and other community organizations to work toward the elimination of intimate partner violence. Proclaim this 7th day of October 2019, Mark Jensen, Mayor.
Thank you for reading that, Debbie. And we'll move on to the next item on today's agenda, and it's approval of minutes. And I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our September 16th, 2019 meeting. Motion been made by Member Mutchi, seconded by Member Lynn. Let's see, no people wanting to change it. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passage unanimously. Brings us to item eight, and that's amendment and approval of today's meeting agenda. Is there... I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Member Tremblay, seconded by Member Lynn. There's no changes. All those in favor of moving forward with the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll move forward with the agenda as presented, and I'd ask the audience to please...
I'm not going to...
Be quiet, so... I'm confused enough, so...
Just have me go with mine.
Okay. Public hearings, there are none today, so we'll move to item 10 on the agenda, and that's bid awards. And that's A 19-323 Pump Station 4 Forest Main Design Study Award. And it's been recommended to us by Utility Director Hagerman to award the bid to PND. And let me look at his memo. I can't find the number here, but I think it's $28,000 and change for this design. This is just the design to come up with the idea of how it would be best to go about this repair. So any discussion? Entertain a motion to approve this recommendation? Motion been made by Member Mutchi, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? At the last meeting, we had another bid award similar to this, and I'd ask for... To get kind of a spreadsheet of the scoring process, and so next time we do it, Mr. Hagerman sent one to us today when I asked, and it's a substantial difference in the bid amount from PND and the other bidder, so that looked good. But just information for the Assembly to look over. So clerk call a roll?
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Passage unanimously. That brings us to item 11, persons to be heard with items related to today's agenda. So I believe there's someone in the audience who would like to testify, so please state your name and who you represent.
Susan Burl and the 420. Am I good to go? I just want to say I am for the taxation on marijuana. I thought, actually, for the last two years, I thought we weren't going to be exempting the seniors. So I've never collected... I mean, you know what I mean? I've always collected tax. But for the seniors, I do want the exemption, you know, in there for the seniors, so that they... I might have said that all backwards, too, because I'm a little nervous. I have always charged tax on marijuana for everybody. I want... Would like to see the seniors excluded from that, but on this... On the one that they said, the red is what I'd like to see added to that, so that it excludes the CBD products. The drugstore sells hemp products, they get to get tax-free, the seniors get tax-free on that, so... And it's not a controlled substance. I can order it online, I can order anywhere, so I do believe that they should be able to get the CBD products tax-free. But I do agree with the marijuana tax.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the audience today that has any ideas related to today's agenda? Seeing none, that moves us to, well, persons to be heard on items unrelated to today's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has a topic unrelated to today's agenda?
Hi, my name's Tor Benson, representing myself. Yeah, I just had two items I kind of been thinking about the last couple of days. I know the recycling program, they're redoing the baler up there, and so it's six weeks' break, and I think, just looking at the program in general, we're going to kind of have to really adjust it, I think, to make it economical and just improve it. So I think overall, the best thing we could do is just reduce the amount of waste that Petersburg's producing, but basically dealing with it once it's produced is the thing I think we control most. And so the consensus has been that glass isn't a recyclable item, so now we're just crushing it. And I think paper's also on that same, like, if you look at economics behind it, cardboard is recyclable, and you actually, people want to recycle it, there's money to be made. And also metals. And so if we, like, concentrated maybe our recycling efforts just on those two, where we look at cardboard and metals, and aluminum, tin, so that the program maybe actually makes money, that might be a more efficient method. I don't think a lot of people have the best intention, and they try to recycle items, maybe they put it in a recycling bin that aren't actually recyclable, just hoping that it'll get recycled, and it just ends up at the dump. So I think if we pair that with maybe education, so that people actually understand, you know, it needs to be clean metals, basically, and that way it just doesn't end up in the landfill, anyway, because my understanding is if we get a bail of mixed recycling, and then they sample and it's not good, then the whole load just goes, so... I listened to the Planet Money episode, and it was episode 926, and it kind of just talked about, like, the economics of recycling, and that was a good... That's kind of what got me thinking about this, and how, like, a lot of it used to go to China, and now they don't want it anymore, because it's too expensive, basically, to ship and everything. So anyway, that was where all this came from, if anyone has an interest, this is episode 926. So what I'm proposing, I guess, would be maybe we reduce it to once a month pickup, because our recycling bins right now are huge, and so if it's just metals and just cardboard, I think you could probably do once a month. And I'd also propose maybe hiring a person part-time, so that they could actually monitor. So, you know, right now, if we get a bail of stuff that just gets thrown away, instead, if you have someone there, you know, that checks it is clean, correct stuff, and if it's not, then maybe they do a ride-along and see, you know, where it's coming from, and basically, the people who did it, they could educate them. Another item I just want to touch on real quick, I talked before about the senior sales tax exemption, and I do support it. I think it's a good program for people that, you know, it's needs-based, basically. But the current program is entitlement-based, so basically the only requirement is you are over the age of 65. And so that is a, like, classic entitlement program. But I also think the way it's set up now, like, it has to pay for itself, so it had the $100 fee for the card, but that's also aggressive tax, where people that, you know, spend the least money, the $100 isn't costing them the most. And also, if, like, you... You can apply it and not pay that $100 fee, but there's no checks on that, so someone makes a lot of money, just says they can't afford it, and they get it, so... Right now, I see that it's not a very efficient program either. And so I do support the program, but I think it needs to be improved, and I think it needs to be needs-based, as I said. And so I think, if we look at the amount of money, I guess about $400,000, I think, that the senior sales tax exemption costs the borough. And if we look at that as what else we could do with that $400,000, like, if we could do education, I mean, basically, it's $400,000, the borough would decide what to do with. And right now, we're subsidizing seniors, which I think, like, needs-based is good, but I think if it went to our schools, you know, $400,000 to our school, if we, like, look at the actual possibility of that $400,000, I think maybe... I know it has to be a ballot measure, but people maybe rethink the need for the senior sales tax exemption for everyone. And so I was thinking that maybe you could do a work group and get, like, a group of people, you know, across the spectrum, high-income, low-income, young, old, and if you've got one together, I'd be interested in joining, so... Anyway, just a thought.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. And when the baler gets up and running again, or possibly even before, but I think after it gets running, were we going to have some presentations by Public Works on the recycling program?
Yes, sir. What we're... Big folk... The reason, again, why the recycling was stopped is recycling has to be bailed, and with the baler taken apart, there's no way to bail it. It also cannot be wet, and we have no place to store it in... Other than out in the open, and it... Once it gets wet, it becomes unacceptable as recycled goods. So we're going to finish the baler install, we'll reinstitute recycling, and Chris is working on, you know, getting all the latest, greatest numbers, and presenting that to the Assembly. And along with that is the whole concept of what the rate increase potentially could be. So we're also waiting for the rate company to get the rate study done, so when we bring it back to the Assembly, we have all of that information for you. So I'll say it again, we're going to reinstate, we'll put recycling back in operation as soon as the baler's done, we'll get the rate study done, and then we'll come back to the Assembly with a full-blown, here's all the numbers, here's how it's going, here's what the commodity prices are, and at that point, you know, look to the Assembly to tell us how you want to proceed, whether that's rates or anything else.
Okay. Member Lynn?
Will that include, Steve, the option of looking at other alternatives of doing business? Like, for instance, going back to, you know, central locations and doing other options?
We could do drop-off right now, and that actually doesn't cost us anything, well, it costs us very little. And so that option has always been on the table. What we'll do when Chris provides the information is show you what recycling's costing in its current form, meaning the commingled curbside pickup. Clearly, there are other options. Tor brought up a couple, you know. You know, a committee would be fine. I think Chris has been talking to some people that have approached him, and kind of, at this point, it's more education, here's what we're dealing with. But we could change the program, those cost everything. Clearly, if we continue recycling, we've got, you know, about a quarter of a million-dollar truck to buy, because the one that we're using now is getting kind of old. So the expenses can be extreme, and, you know, how the Assembly wants to handle that from a rate perspective, and how the community wants to handle it, is going to be a big part of the conversation. And I can't answer that today. I just... Until we're done with the rate study and we see all that, we don't really know what those costs are going to be.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Member Mutchi, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, this is a pretty good opportunity, you know, since we're not picking up recyclables, that if we were going to change some things, this would be a good opportunity to kind of roll that into when we start collecting it again. I think having a workshop or a work session with Chris and a few folks, just trying to sort out what some of the ideas are, so that when it's time, we don't have to go back and reinvent the wheel and tell people, no, they can't throw away this. This is what we want to do, just to start this program again, so that's what I'm hoping for.
Sure. And we could do that. There was a lot of concern by members of the public that this was, you know, I even heard it, this is just an excuse to end recycling. It's not the case. I mean, if you want to go up to the baler this morning, you'll see why we're not doing it right now, they've got a bunch of heavy equipment moving stuff around. So we did not want to leave the community with that impression. So I'll say it again, we fully intend to restart recycling in its current form the minute that baler is up and running, and then I'm... I think Chris has continued to say this, we're more than welcome to have a, you know, put a committee together. We don't have all that information right now. So we didn't want to change anything and have people in the community react in a way that was not necessarily correct. We don't want people to overreact to it. So again, we're going to keep doing recycling in its current form until such time that we bring that all forward to the Assembly, and we have that discussion about rates and costs and potentially other options. So I do encourage people, reach out to Chris Cotta. He's had a conversation with a couple of folks, and that's continuing, and some of it's, you know, he's toured people through there, he's shown them the numbers, and we can talk through any of those ideas, and he can, you know, provide the information on the sanitation side, what it's taking to handle any of that.
Any other questions about this topic? Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's board commission and committee reports. There are none today, so that moves us to the consent agenda, item 14. And today, there's one item on the consent agenda, and it's acceptance of a $295,000 grant award from fiscal year 2019 State Homeland Security Program. I'd entertain a motion to accept this grant. So... Motion been made by Member Mutchi, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? I have one question. I know a few years back, we had a grant for officer, Homeland Security Officer at the airport, and we were obligated to keep that position filled for a certain length of time. I'm just wondering if there's any attachments to this grant, obligations to the borough, et cetera, for perpetuity?
No, this grant here has nothing to do with staffing whatsoever.
It's just training, and then the 911, E-911 system.
The E-911 system, you know, for me, you know, it feels like we just did this.
That's what I thought.
But it's now over six years old, I think, seven years old.
And this is a... The stuff that we have is actually failing.
Yeah. It's like a desktop computer or a laptop computer. If you get three years out of them, you go, wait, great. This thing is, unfortunately, in that similar mode, we've nursed it along. We're going to use this grant, as well as money from the telecommunications franchise money that goes into a special account just for this kind of stuff. We're hoping we have enough to get that project done and completed.
Good. Chief Kerr?
We... I believe what you guys are referring to is a spillman. We just got spillman, and this is something totally different. We actually brought our... All of our old dispatch stuff... We actually brought our, all of our old dispatch stuff over to the new building and so that's what, that's why it's failing, it's old.
Yeah.
And so, we're actually updating all that, all that stuff, so, 2012.
Thank you. Member Lynn, you have a?
Two questions. One, when we put that, are we going to go out for bids on this or are we going to define what we want as a product and then go out for alternative bids on this? Or are we going to one vendor and saying, this is, this is it?
I think it's going to be a sole-source type deal on this.
Yeah.
Through Motorola.
What we want is a system that will work with our current radio system and the Spillman system as well. When we get that far and we get the scope of it, it may very well be sole-sourced, that which has to come back to the assembly to be approved. Currently, the system that we have for eight, for E-911 was provided by APNT and they don't necessarily have the support staff here. We'd like something that we could use ProCom, the people who are supporting all of our radio and the Spillman project as well, and make that kind of in sync with that so that we, when we bring somebody here to town, they can look at all of that equipment. Again, we'll see what happens. It may, it may have to be a bid process based on what the assembly wants to do and we also have to double-check that with Homeland Security as well. They're pretty picky on how their money's spent.
My second question is, you're looking at supporting, it will support both telephones and everybody in the borough. In other words, out, whether they lay out, lay in town, it'll, it'll reach out for folks so you can have communications.
Yes. But one of the things that it's an ongoing question about 911 is the ability to respond to texts and I don't want to sit here and respond, say whether or not this new system will do that or not. Some of that's going to be pricing, but it's also technology. I want to make sure when we get that far, that DMS dispatchers and stuff have all the tools they need. If we can put response to texts and we'll do it, but I can't sit here today and promise that. I mean, the technology changes so quick that we may find what we say today is different than when this project actually goes in, where we put it in place.
Thank you.
Member Muti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this has nothing to do with the Code Red program? Or, no, nothing? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? See, none on the court, please call the roll.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously with a four-zero vote and we'll see what transpires after we get the grant money. Next item is the mayor's report. There is no report of other officers. I'll give a summary of the Southeast Conference we went to. Southeast by the numbers, just a couple of highlights here. Southeast population decreased by 80 people over the last year. Total government jobs decreased by 108 jobs. Cruise ship passengers increased by 7% to 1.2 million. The numbers are kind of conflicting, depends on where you look, but it's right in that range. 2020, the cruise ship industry expects another 6% increase. This industry relies on a strong national economy to keep, you know, the ridership, so a national recession could affect this industry's growth, but it looks like it's got a positive growth in the future. Pounds of seafood landed in Southeast Alaska decreased by 118 million pounds last year, a loss of 39%, which is a pretty big number and we'll probably see that reflection when we're looking at our raw fish tax money. Healthcare jobs increased in the region by 121 jobs, 3% gain, so that's a big growth in that industry. Senator Stedman gave a little presentation and one thing he said to look out for was the new formula for school funding. It would not be good the way it's currently being written for rural communities, so that's something we should, should watch. In regards to the Prince Rupert ferry route, Mayor Prisalka from Wrangell kind of organized a little meeting between the mayors from Southeast that were there and some other elected officials, representatives from Lukowski and, you know, Solomon's Office and Southeast Conference reps. Robert Venables was there, also Lee Brain, the mayor of Prince Rupert was there, plus the four, and as well as the former mayor. And we just sat and had a little conversation. It sounds like Prince Rupert would really like to continue the run. They're responsible for paying for the officers that are necessary. So, and they have a terminal, a Canadian-owned terminal that could possibly be used if, you know, ours is in such a bad state of repair. And then there's the, you know, build with America, that's steel rule, so that's a costly endeavor part of it, too. So, there might be a short-term fix, but the work is, you know, that's in the works. Senator Stedman added $2 million to the state budget, operating budget, last year and specifically for, you know, contingency money for potentially the ferry. So, numbers that were thrown around, you know, Prince Rupert said they could handle the fees for the officer until March and in the next 18 months, it would be $200,000 and that $2 million could be used towards that. If there's any questions of any other topics that were discussed over there, there was some talk about hydro projects, Gunnet Creek and Cake, Thayer Creek and Angoon and many, many other things, so is there any other questions? Okay, so it was very interesting and hopefully we can get the ferry route to Rupert. One more thing I'll add, when the discussions were being had, people in the room would prefer the Prince Rupert run over the Bellingham run, you know, and why it went the way it did was you'd have to ask DOT for an answer, I guess. And last, municipal league and the local government conference, I will be attending that in November. Assemblymember Trimbley will attend the newly-elected official trainings at the conference and possibly the local government conference as well, that would be great. Municipal 2019 election, thank you to all the borough residents who took the time to vote in the borough's municipal election on October 1st, also people that put their name in for the positions that we voted on. Also, a big thank you to all those who volunteered to help the election run smoothly. The borough is seeking letters of interest, the assembly is seeking letters of interest from qualified borough residents to serve on the planning commission until October 2020 municipal election. There are currently two vacant seats to qualify to serve. You must be a registered borough voter and a resident of the borough for at least one year. Letters of interest can be mailed to Clerk Thompson at Box 329, Petersburg, Alaska, 99833, or emailed to dthompson@petersburgak.gov or dropped off at the clerk's office at the municipal building on Main Street. The United States Census for 2020, April 1st, 2020 is United States Census Day. Petersburg residents will receive hand-delivered information about how to complete the census form online in March of 2020. Accurate census data is important for many reasons. One of the biggest reasons is that federal funding programs distribute funds based upon population counts. Census employees are needed for Petersburg and now is the time to apply for a job on the 2020 census team. Two flyers are attached to this report, one explains why, the census team asks the questions they do and the other provides information on how to apply for a job with the 2020 census team. For more information, contact Petersburg Indian Association, the Chamber of Commerce or the Borough Clerk's Office. And they're pretty good-paying jobs, I think I saw $28 to $31, so anybody looking for a little spare money, that's, please put your name in. So, that concludes my mayor's report. Well, we can move on to the manager's report, please, Steve.
Thank you, sir. If anyone out there is interested in lifeguarding, we currently have eight lifeguard positions open now. Schedule is flexible to all participants. We're also still looking for custodian for the Parks and Rec facility. Please email chandra@seethornberg@petersburgak.gov to get on the interest list. Lots of events at Parks and Rec coming up. If you're interested in participating or volunteering, please see Stephanie Pean for more information. They'll also be closed for Alaska Day on October 18th and on the 19th due to a high school swim meet. Parks and Rec is hosting another community meeting tonight at 5:30. We also have the next Friends of Parks and Rec meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 16th at 5:30 PM. All are welcome to attend both meetings. The Friends is more project-oriented and the community meeting was to talk through some of the issues that were brought up several weeks ago. The mayor report for KFSK for September was actually Parks and Rec and outline of the notes for this report has been posted on their website at www.petersburgrec.com. Added to that is Stephanie attended the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference in September and was able to attend over 15 training sessions, which focused on programming, planning and employee management. Thanks to Rotary and the Sandy Beach Playground Committee, which are working together to raise funds to replace the playground at Sandy Beach. They have been successful in receiving a grant from PIA to include information of the history of the park and native culture. If you wish to be a part of this, please contact Daisy Burrell or Chandra for more information. Sandy is busy teaching the Emergency Trauma Technician Course. We started with 13 students and we're continuing with 12. Testing is on Sunday, the 6th and 10/9, correct, Jenny? Thank you. Sandy Ryan and Chief Stolpe will participate in a tabletop exercise at Trident Seaford's for an ammonia release. Make sure we are all in the same place on that. The preliminary decision for the Petersburg Municipal Land Entitlement, this is part of where we formed the borough, is now under review by the Department of Law. We hadn't heard that that was a necessary step, but we have found since then that it's kind of maybe the final step before they turn that loose. We've sent DNR our next set of land selections to begin the review process for that. We do not at this point have a timeframe. Department of Law as well as DNR are not overly forthcoming with dates and times. We've sent this to both our, you know, JKT and Senator Stedman's office as well, Juno lobbyist, and hopefully we'll have more of an update when we're at AML. The Forest Service Rack Program is continuing to seek projects for funding in Petersburg. It's kind of fairly narrow scope and the projects must accomplish goals to improve the maintenance of existing infrastructure, implementing stewardship objectives and enhance forest ecosystems and restoring and improving land health and water quality. The committee meets again on November 6th at 6:30 PM at the Forest Service office. So, it, we proposed helping us fix the stairs at Eagles Roost and that doesn't touch a forest, so they turned that one down, so. Visitor Industry Working Group is scheduled for a meeting on October 17th at 2:00 PM in the Assembly Chambers, anybody who is interested in that. The Petersburg Police Department conducted some joint training with the U.S. Coast Guard utilizing the Ocean Duty bunkhouse, this is the second time we've done that. Petersburg is assisting the Coast Guard on their response to active threats and working with local law enforcement agencies. We're hoping to be able to continue to do that. The Caterpillar Greco Training scheduled for last week was rescheduled for this week. NC Equipment of Juno is loaning us an equipment simulator and providing an instructor for some basic training at no charge to the borough. We will be advertising the RFP for sanding and snow removal at Popke's this week in the newspaper, see what interest there is. Water cool pool crew is adjusting to their temporary cores as we continue to work with the insurance company on our claim over the shop fire. The engineering report is currently recommending repairs instead of a full rebuild, but we do not have costs at this point and that could potentially change a little. Chris, Joe B. and I are all working through the details with them as it's kind of a very slow, steady process. The site preparation for the baler is totally on schedule. Old baler was demoed by the streets crew and all the steelwork is underway and completed. Pit modifications are done. The new baler and conveyor are actually on-site up there and in the process of being installed today and this week, so. Got a few pictures that Chris has been sharing as the day goes on. Then, water staff's been looking for a week around the Presbyterian Church. Alaska Rural Water Association recently came to town to help with some more sophisticated equipment and has found signs of a significant leak on Fourth Street between Hagen and Iwo Two. Water staff is working with Public Works to get on their schedule for excavation and repair of the leaking pipe. Carl, do you have an update on that at all?
No, but it's not going well, so.
Okay.
It's not a very good update, sorry.
That's okay, that's what I'd ask. Is the problem finding it or just?
I think it's finding.
Yeah, okay. So, if anybody sees anything, let us know. Staff recently had PND engineers from Seattle and Petersburg for our three-year dam safety inspections at Cabin Creek and City Creek Dams. The reports are pending from the inspections, but no major issues were noted. Well, the inspectors were on-site and repairs and improvements that we previously have done at City Creek passed muster with the inspectors, so that's all good news. Waste water staff's been trying to identify some areas of stormwater inflow, which can overwhelm the collection system. This is where stormwater is getting into our sanitary sewer lines. During recent heavy rainfall, seems to be a growing problem as we, you know, our wastewater treatment plant was getting a lot more than they expected. Any residents that have roof gutters, yard drains, French drains or other stormwater, rainwater connections to the sewer system should eliminate those connections and direct the water to natural drainages or storm drains. We definitely do not want stormwater going into the sewer system. It gets expensive because we have to treat everything that goes into the sewer system. SEPA experienced failure of one of the marine cables on Sunday, September 29th. This resulted in Power and Light providing power via diesel generators for approximately 28 hours. SEPA switched to the spare cable to restore hydropower and is now launching an effort to pinpoint the fault location and repair the cable. They will provide additional detail as it is available. I'll let Carl talk about this weekend's outage when I'm done with my next, the rest of this. We did have a bear that damaged a fiber optic communications line between Blind Slough Powerhouse and the Crystal Lake Dam. Staff worked with chemical helicopters and APNT to repair one known area of damage to the cable, but it's still not in operation. Efforts continue to locate additional damage and repair the cable. Why a bear wants to chew on a fiber optic cable, I don't particularly know, but they did. Line crew will be auditing the streetlights this month to repair any lights prior to Halloween. If the public knows of any streetlights in their neighborhoods that are malfunctioning or not functioning, please report them to Power and Light at 772-4203 so we can get somebody out there to fix them before the kids are out on Halloween. And last on my list, a big thank you to Petersburg pioneers for providing an amazing lunch on Saturday, the 28th, for the elderly housing and assisted living ladies, all had a great time. Carl, could you?
We did have another outage yesterday, everybody else. The weather yesterday was pretty horrendous, winds 30 miles an hour, rain sideways, but the, so the problem was a tree that had, not a big tree though, thank goodness, leaned up against the tie transmission line at about five mile and caused a fault that we responded to and feel pretty good about the response from the Power and Light crew. They were on it right away. Power was only out at my house for 45 minutes. We did have a, an issue after they cleared the line and we got back on hydropower, we found another arcing issue up on Lumber Street on this, the, I guess would be the south side of the long span that crosses the slough and so we needed another 15-minute outage on that circuit to repair that, but it was a tough day for the line crew and the operators yesterday, but they did a really good job and I'm also very thankful to the Fire Department and Police Department who helped out with traffic control and keeping people away from those dangerous areas, so.
All right, perfect. Is there any questions of Steve on his manager's report? I've got one question, I guess it'd probably be best for Carl. How long has the stormwater overflowing issue been a problem? Has it been growing or?
It's been an on and off issue because over time, we do, pretty much the staff out at the wastewater plant does constant auditing of where the water's coming from. If we get large reinevents and the flow goes up dramatically, they start looking for where that water could come from. Sometimes it's an open pipe, a service line that somebody was going to connect to and then didn't and didn't plug the end of the pipe, so it's just sitting there wide open and collecting water. and collecting water. Other times, it's cracked pipe, manholes, lids that are, the frame has come loose, and they're just leaking water. So it's an ongoing issue that the staff has been dealing with, and it goes up and down depending on if they find correct issues and if new issues crop up that we don't know where they are yet. So, not this weekend, but the, the last big rain event a couple of weeks ago, we had a pump station, it's actually Scowl Bay 1 pump station that we're going to be upgrading here soon, next, next spring, that we had to bypass for a short amount of time because of the water was just coming into the station too fast. Normally, our average flow this summer at the wastewater plant has been, I want to say, about 350,000 gallons a day coming into the plant. On that day, we had 1.6 million gallons come in, so that's a lot of rainwater coming into the system.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. If there's no other questions of the manager, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's unfinished business. And today, we have one ordinance for this third and final reading. This ordinance, 2019-08, an ordinance determining that property conveyed to the borough in a tax foreclosure proceeding is not required for a public purpose and shall be disposed of by the borough. I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-08 in its third and final reading.
So move.
Motion been made by Member Lynn, seconded by Member Muti. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, then the clerk call a roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, passes unanimously in its third and final reading. New business. First one, item under new business is ordinance 2019-09, an ordinance amending Chapter 4.28 sales tax of the borough code to clarify that sales of marijuana and marijuana products to nonprofit organizations and senior citizens are subject to the borough sales tax. So I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance in its first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion been made by Member Muti, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? Member Lynn?
Couple of questions. The alternative we have, is this an alternative to the part we have in our package? Or is this an amendment?
It's an addition. It's an addition to it, so it would, it would support what Susie Burrell brought to you a little bit earlier, that states that CBD oil would not be taxable for seniors. How it, and that's what's been going on with at the drugstore, because I believe they sell some type of CBD products as well. And if you're over, if you're able to get something over the counter, it's not taxable for seniors.
Okay, and you're supportive of this?
Yes.
So we could make an amendment to add that language in the red under Section 4.28-020, or we could do it at the second reading when there's a public hearing, or either way, it would, would work for us, so.
It'd be less paperwork if you did it now. Okay.
We could do it now.
Yeah.
If there, anybody would like to make a motion to amend it?
So move.
Okay. To add the language in red under that section. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Clerk call a roll on the amendment.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes, okay, so ordinance 2018, under Section 4.28.020, has been amended to add the language that's in red. So back to the motion as, or ordinance as amended, the main motion, I'd entertain, is there any discussion on that? Clerk call a roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 2019-09 passes in its first reading. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 2019-10, an ordinance providing for Chapter 3.10 of the municipal code entitled "Public Notice of Meetings," updating current language to reflect borough incorporation. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance in its first reading.
Second.
Motion been made by Member Muti, seconded by Member Lynn. Is there any discussion? Most of these changes are just housekeeping, the change from city wording to borough, so. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk call a roll?
Mark?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2019-10 passes in its first reading. Brings us to ordinance 2019-11. This is an ordinance providing for Chapter 3.70 of the municipal code entitled "Petersburg School Board," updating current language to reflect borough incorporation. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance in its first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made by Member Lynn, seconded by Member Muti. Any discussion? Clerk call a roll.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2019-11 passes in its first reading. Next item under new business is ordinance 2019-12, an ordinance providing for repeal of Chapters 3.42 titled Utility Advisory Board and 3.49 titled Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of the Code of the Former City of Petersburg, now Service Area 1. I'd entertain a motion to approve this ordinance in its first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Member Muti, seconded by Member Lynn. Any discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Member Muti?
Just one question. So this is just kind of getting rid of utility board and Parks and Recreation Board?
Um, the code, yes, that is associated. There is still old city code that we are working on as borough code that just still needs to be transferred over, so you're going to see many more of these. I haven't had a lot of time to work on it, but I'm trying to focus so we can get to one book instead of two.
Thank you.
And if, if anyone wanted to bring back one of these boards, it would just be a matter of bringing it to you or to us?
Correct. So basically, yes, we could rewrite an ordinance if the Assembly decides to bring back any of these boards.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, these were just removed during the borough formation. Now we're just changing the language, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk call a roll.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-12 passes unanimously in its first reading. That brings us to item E-19-325, Southeast, Southern Southeast Regional Agriculture Association Board Member Nomination. So they're asking for the borough to put someone on the board of directors from Sarah, that's from the municipality, if I'm reading this right.
To nominate someone from the Assembly?
To be voted on.
Including the mayor. So it has to be one of, someone that's seated in the Assembly, the nomination, yes.
Who's not here, we can nominate. Anybody express interest of us sitting at the diocese today? Can we bring it back up when we have a full assembly? Or is this a deadline? Is there a deadline?
They do have a deadline. Let me see, it's in the letter. Where's, when's the deadline? By December 2nd, so yeah, we can. We can bring it up at another meeting.
Put it on the next agenda?
Move forward, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Does that work with the Assembly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, next item on the agenda is communications. Does anybody have any communications? We did get some communications from Heather Eboy from CAC, and they, CAC organization is gonna, is putting together a resolution to talk, take a position on transboundary rivers. So I think we all got a copy of that email, and she will actually be in town, Heather Eboy, on the 23rd or 4th of the month.
Correct.
And so, maybe we'll, if you see her on the street, and I'm going to try to make a point to talk to her, but it should be similar to the other resolutions from other entities that we've seen about this issue, so. It's the only communication I have. Simply discussion items, recognitions, are there any recognitions? Member Muti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just an announcement that the, the state trooper is going to get his sergeant's promotion on Wednesday, and I think the ceremony's going to be up here. I think it's at 10 o'clock, but I'm not exactly sure, but.
I think it's today.
Today?
It's today at, um...
2:30, 3, something like that?
3:30.
Okay, great. I'm glad I brought it up.
Trooper Lester?
Yes. He's going to get his sergeant's promotion today.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah. That's great. I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention.
All right, thanks for bringing that up. That's good. If there's no other recognitions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to do a quick one.
Okay, sure. Sorry, Chelsea.
Yeah, just, um, first meeting, thanking everyone for having me. I'm really excited. And I'd like to circle it back, actually, to the proclamation regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month. WAVE's been doing a fundraiser. They've lost a significant source of funding with the Don Levy vetoes, and so PFDs have come out, and if people can find and support WAVE this month, that'd be a really great time, so, yeah. Thanks for all the work that they do for the community.
All right, thank you.